We begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin our meeting with public participation on agenda items only reminder that we are being live streamed. And there's a three minute cap on public participation comments. Do we have any public participation on agenda items?
Good morning. One over three sides, whatever township. I learned from you guys and I'm gonna pull out matters requiring board action. Fifteen, sixteen, and fifty five. For items fifteen and sixteen, but the first thing I'd like to say is we're currently in an era where federal funding is just getting stopped willy nilly and deleted by like nineteen year olds. So I just wondered if the county has been looking at anything that comes in through federal funding streams. How much money do we actually have on hand and how much do we need to get from treasury to the accounts to ensure that a lot of these programs are gonna, you know, just to make sure that have our eyes on it in case the money just stops flowing. Another thing I'd like to mention on number sixteen, oh, this is, this is too good today. On number sixteen, All You Can Inc. is an organization that I'm sure does great work and it's run by a Ralph Rodriguez who is on Harrisburg City Council. He was just here a few weeks ago. And I, I understand some of this money might go through other boards to get selected who gets it. I'm not sure how this money comes to you. But given everything that's been going on, I guess I'm just curious if this board thinks that there's any like conflicts of interest with other electeds or people who are connected to other people. And if anyone needs to recuse themselves or anything, or if any more conversation needs to happen about that. I'm not saying that the money won't be used for what it's supposed to, but I do have questions about whether All You Can Inc. has a lot of experience in this. And if anyone's seen like what results they've gotten elsewhere. And then for number fifty five, oh, so many numbers on here, guys. Fifty five, it's just a quarter of a million dollars to something called Dolphin County Live Concert Series. I would like to hear a lot more about what that is before a quarter of a million dollars is going to something that's unclear. I, I, yeah, I just don't know. Like we just had to cut a lot of budgets and all this stuff. And I, a quarter of a million dollars is a lot of money. It's unclear where this money is coming from and why this would be important to the county right now, you know? I know we spent money filling up the chief clerk's office and stuff and I, I know that that administrative money could definitely be used around the county instead of for like maybe a live concert series. So those are my items. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Pam Parson from the city of Harrisburg. When I look over this, there is a lot here that is a lot of money and have a questions about a lot of things, but I'll pull out two. I'll start with number twenty one, which is an agreement between Dolphin County Camp Curtain Learning Community Corporation and the city of Harrisburg. It's a local share grant. I have no idea what that is. I tried looking it up yesterday. There's no website. It connects back to something that is a preschool, but there's no website for this, nor can I figure out who the people were. But in looking in the corporation bureau, it was incorporated in two thousand eight by Nevin Midland, an old neighbor of mine, who's been gone from Harrisburg many years and in fact, passed away a couple of years ago. So that's pretty opaque. I'd also like you to just go back to, all the way back to the, almost the last page, item number fifty two, which is the agreement between District Attorney's Office and Gary Lathrop. This was on your agenda a couple of months ago. And this wording here and this, and what it says about the contract is much different, which I appreciate. It's much more focused, not to exceed forty thousand dollars. This particular person has had a contract with the county since about twenty ten. And what are the deliverables? I don't need any personal information. I would just, it would be helpful to know what an accounting at the end of each contract period, what this person did. And in a lot of these things, it's what are we getting? What are we, what will we get from this money being spent? And then an accounting at the end about how it was spent. So transparency. And I know we said RFP everything, maybe it's also no data, no dollars. Thank you.
I'm here for representing my father. He's incarcerated in Dolphin County prison. He's been there for a period of almost four to five years.
Just, just really quick. So this is on agenda items only. There'll be another time for public comment at the end of the meeting. So is it possible that we, we hold it for that unless it's related to an agenda item?
No problem.
Apologies. Can we, can we have your name though?
Yeah, Robert Gross.
Robert, nice to meet you, Robert. We'll, we'll have you back at the end of the meeting or at the, toward the end of the meeting. Anyone else for a public comment on agenda items only? All right, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. I'm gonna make a motion that we table the approval of minutes. I haven't had a chance to, to review. I was given copies prior to meeting, haven't had a chance to review, so I'm gonna make a motion that we table all three items.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is there a, a particular timeline that is anticipated for us to receive these minutes? We have to review them versus a one time came in late kind of thing?
I, I think I'm being indicated that we, we should have them, but we, we should be able to review them by next, by next week prior to next week's meeting. So, yeah, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Should we do the salary board as separate since it doesn't matter, doesn't affect, okay, all right. All right, executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Hagerty.
On February eleventh, the Commissioners held an executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding consideration on the purchase and lease of real property, RFP processes, contract review, state and federal funding, flood mitigation, bond proceeds, and personnel matters.
Thank you. We have directors and guests. We'll begin with Ms. Whedon.
Good morning.
Starting with the salary board, just item A.
Do I have a motion for?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to thank the public defender for continuing to stay on top of budget related items. And this is one of those areas where we abolish a position, create a new one that's actually less in salary benefits than the prior.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Sweden.
And for the personnel packet with the exclusion for the ones you voted on last week, which were items fifteen, nineteen, and twenty. I'd like to request an approval on the remaining items. So it would be one through fourteen, sixteen through eighteen, and twenty one through fifty five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Davis. Appreciate it.
All right, Commissioners, I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out yesterday. There's no questions. I did hand you a paper for the purchase order packet. That was part of the packet last week. When I printed this, I just missed stapling it to the back for those, so they're not new requests. They've been part of the site.
Could I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Are there times where purchases are made and they're not put on the purchase packet for a, a, a period of time? So what's the process related to receiving a request for a purchase versus when it appears on our purchase packet?
Well, the policy is that anything that goes on a packet, if it needs a purchase order, the purchase order should be requested and approved prior to the purchase being made. You know, sometimes that's not the case. Sometimes prices change from the original purchase order. We have had cases where in reviewing credit cards that purchases have needed purchase order that have not gotten one in the past, so a purchase order should be gotten before the purchase is made, but I, that doesn't always happen.
So are there any purchases in this purchase order packet that were made prior to them appearing in the purchase order packet?
I couldn't tell you that right now. I would have to pull them up to pull invoice dates to see.
But just suffice to say that's not a standard practice?
It should not be, no.
Again, I, I have a couple of questions. They'll, they'll be handled with you. I just want to be clear related to our procedures and I don't know why there are items that are appearing in this purchase order packet that, that I believe have been purchased quite some time ago that are only appearing in the purchase order packet today for the first time. That's not the way that I understood the procedure. And it's not the way that I think this procedure should be run. And I've got concerns about any other things that may be appearing later that were already purchased. I thought a part of that process should be for these purchase orders to come in front of the Board of Commissioners and make the determination of a purchase and then they are made.
Commissioner.
The way it should happen, but if a, a purchase is made and then we find out about it later, we then make the department put in a purchase order before the board, before Mary's team will pay.
So it's similar to conference and training. If my department is approving an expense or an invoice and it isn't following procedures, they will reject the, the invoice or expense request and tell them it either needs a conference and training request form approved or it needs a purchase order.
If something was purchased, let's say six months, eight months ago, it takes that long to appear in front of Board Commissioners.
If that's.
If they didn't, if they didn't do the PO ahead of time and my office is getting an invoice and it should have had a purchase order, we're, we're rejecting it back to the departments.
I just want to understand the procedure. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval to purchase order packet? Second, any discussion?
Yes, because it was, was just brought up if there were particular items within the packet that one of my colleagues feels is potentially in violation or not following protocol, I think that now would be the appropriate time to discuss it and not vote on.
I, I, it's a purchase order DCP zero one zero zero nine seven three.
I'm happy to pull the back up and see.
Just don't know why it appears to the impact.
That was purchased months ago.
I, I don't understand how that happens. This seems ironic that it appears now.
I would have to pull and look. I, I would assume it would be something that an invoice got submitted for and.
Again, procedurally, I just want to make sure that we have processes in place that are clearly in place for a reason that we are all supposed to be adhering to and follow. Again, I'm, just on that point alone, I'm, I'm gonna be voting no on this packet, not because I disagree with those, but I disagree with the process that is undertaken related to when these things appear and they don't appear.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning Commissioners. I have two items to note today. First, the professional services engineering RFP deadline has been extended to March thirty first. And second, we have a director's meeting scheduled for next Thursday, February twentieth. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity to join folks for that. This concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Hagerty?
None for me.
All right, Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you Commissioner Douglas. Matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved for legality from my office.
All right, we have matters requiring board action from number one to fifty six. Are there any that need pull, be voted on separately?
Only for me fifty five. And I will want to make a comment. And I can actually hold my comments on the agenda items to my public comments. So we, it's just one thing I'd like to point out that I think is a good cooperative relationship that should be noted.
I'll make a motion for approval of items one through fifty four and fifty six.
I would, I would actually like to pull sixteen if possible to be noted on separately. So sorry, all those without sixteen, are you, are you okay with that?
Without sixteen and fifty five.
Yeah. So that's your motion? Okay, I'll second.
I have a question that was brought up by a member of the public about item fifty two. Agreement between Dolphin County DA and Gary T. Lathrop for emotional support services for Dolphin County municipal police officers and their departments and first responders. What is the length of that term?
I do not have that here with me. I do not know the answer to that.
I mean, is it, is it a one year contract?
We, we believe it's one year, but we would need to see the contract.
I reviewed that contract and I do believe it is a, a one year based on just my memory.
All right. If there's a one year contract, then I will proceed without any further questions.
I have a few questions on, on number fifteen. So the Nauman Center is still remaining in Northern Dolphin. I know for a while they were, they, did they pull some of their other services?
Randy, could you come up and address that please?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
The Nauman Center at this point will remain there for a limited time. We are working with additional providers to gather whether other providers would be willing to serve that community. And that's why there's, hopefully there will not be any laps in service. That's our.
Got you, got you, great.
They, they have noted to us that they would prefer not to continue to serve.
Yeah, that was my understanding. That's why I was a little stressed, too. So I'm thankful that they're going to stay for a little while longer so that we have.
Short term.
And we found a potentially new partner that we are vetting.
Correct. They need some ramp-up time now for that particular service.
Correct. I also want to note items seventeen and eighteen. I had the opportunity to meet with those who run the or sorry, yeah, both of those, yeah, the opioid, yeah, grants. I'm in favor of will approve moving forward. I've kind of gotten a briefing on the process, so thankful for that. Thank you.
While you're here, I want to say a special thank you to the work that you and your team have done and continue to do. You are involved in so many aspects of county government, and I know we're all excited about the opportunities moving forward with over at Techport, the new one-stop-shop human services project that Commissioner Hartwick has taken the lead on, and I think it's going to be a real, real benefit to the county moving forward and a huge cost savings, too, down the road as we incorporate everything into one location. But I appreciate the work that you and your team have been doing and look forward to exciting times ahead and working with you on that project.
Thank you so much. We are very excited and certainly appreciate the board's support.
Thank you, Randy. I want to mention items twenty-one and twenty-two. I know twenty-one, there were comments about, just one clarity, these are items that were already granted as grants, and these are amendments to the grants. So I just think the public needs to understand that these are not new grants going out the door that are being approved. They're amendments to grants that were already approved, and maybe the scope of services changed or something needed edited. For the sake of Camp Curtain Learning Community Corporation, I don't know about that. I do think I would prefer to, maybe if someone's aware of what they're doing, that would be great for the commissioners to be briefed on. As, you know, I would like to know that it's a legitimate organization, so. Oh, Randy, you know? Great.
And I don't think they're amendments. I think they're actually just the grant agreements that are required as a follow-up part of
Okay.
the process.
Yep.
So what I know about the Camp Curtain Learning Center is that they have been providing free preschool for years.
Okay.
And we are very appreciative in human services of that opportunity because it enables many parents and their children to receive high-quality service. They also have quite skilled volunteers, including Dr. Ellen Smith, who is a trauma-informed trainer who is on their staff. So I've worked with them for years, and we're very thankful for free preschool services.
Sounds good. And Commissioner, I've brought this up over the years. This is something that is routine. I've never understood why when we vote on the gaming grant allocations, ten months later or a year later, they're still coming up. It's been approved from the, this was the twenty-twenty-four approved numbers, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four. So this is routine paperwork that's associated with these items.
We vote on the allocation, but then the grant agreements, we also have to approve.
Yes.
Thanks again, Randy. I have no more comments. All right, we're taking a vote on items one through fifty-six without items fifty-five and sixteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? None? Motion carries. All right, item sixteen, do we have a motion for item sixteen?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? No? Motion carries. Item fifty-five. I have a motion for item fifty-five.
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Just my comment and reason to be known. I just don't know sort of the origin of the plan or even where the requests come from. I think with so many critical operational, fiscal, and regulatory issues that need to be prioritized, the need to spend a quarter of a million dollars on a whimsical new concert doesn't even make sense to me. Continuing to spend money frivolously at any time, but especially on the heels of a tax increase, I don't believe is wise and is a bad practice that I will not be a part of, and I will be voting no.
Understood. Frank, George, could you both come up? Just go for Mr. Connor and and maybe we can hear a little bit about the concert series. I think I want to kind of set the stage of, you know, you see a picture on the screen here of the Harrisburg University Concert Series, and we, we previously supported these last year for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We supported these. And since last year, they've now canceled the concerts, fired, laid off staff that were providing this. Frank being, you know, one of those staff members. And we know the impact that these concerts have had on our city, on our county, on our communities. And so just to kind of set the stage, this is an effort to try to save those concerts. And an effort that has a business plan that is ultimately going to cost the county less for, and it's tourism money coming from the hotel tax dollars. But I'll let you, you both speak to to this in a little more detail.
Good evening, or good morning, good afternoon, rather. I'm George Connor, Executive Director of Dolphin County Economic Development Department. I'm Frank Schofield. He's been a promoter for the Riverfront Concert Series. Commissioner Douglas, in conversations, when you first got here, when you first got elected, we were just talking about what my office does, explaining to you what we do, and you had mentioned about having a concert from similar to South by Southwest, which is in Austin, Texas. So we've been discussing this for a while now, and we're kind of at that point now where we need to make next steps to secure the artists, and that's why we're here, and that's what the request is for. And also, I did some research on the South by Southwest event in Austin, Texas. It started in nineteen eighty-seven. They anticipated a hundred and fifty people to attend this concert series. Seven hundred and fifty attended. Currently now, forty-six thousand, seven hundred people attend this concert. And it's evolved over the years. It's three hundred and seventy-seven million dollars economic impact to the region for Austin, Texas. And it's more than just a concert series like HU has. It has film, a film component, technology, and education as well. For our first one, we anticipate about twelve thousand people to attend. It's going to be a three-day series of concerts. We are going to potentially partner with the Central PA Film Commission, who I've spoke with, Mr. John Trey Williams as well, to add that film component to this concert series. And that's kind of where we're at, and we think we're going to potentially generate between one point eight to two point one million in economic impact for this region. Obviously, these tourism dollars, this is what they're for. I mean, to generate different events and concerts and things of that nature, to draw tourism into Dolphin County for hotel stays, that's what the money's for. That's what it is. It's not real estate tax. It's not revenue to the county that will offset the budget costs strictly for tourism-type events, and that's what this is. So that being said, I'll let Mr. Schofield say a few words and take it from there.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time here today. I'm Frank Schofield, formerly with Harrisburg University. I had the I was directed in charge of the Riverfront Park events that we had over the past six years. As I sit here today, you know, I'm kind of honored to just, you take a look at what we've done over the six years, and the Riverfront Park shows continued to grow continuously through those years. We made Harrisburg, which was a secondary market, really a main prime market, where artists would never even consider Harrisburg. And, you know, through the help of the promoters and the agents, we really made Harrisburg through the series a destination where main big artists would come in. Usually have to go to Baltimore, Philadelphia, or New York or something like that, but all of a sudden, you know, we were getting looks, and we would ask for shows to come in, and then they were asking us because they knew of the excitement, they knew the crowds that we were getting, they needed the support, and that the artists and the venues were being held properly. And, you know, a lot of times that that doesn't happen out there. There's a lot of times festivals will pop up, this or that, and they just fall down after like one or two years because they're not correct. But six years, you know, we did a great job. This is a continuation of conversations I had with Commissioner Douglas, and we just continued that these were going away. With HU going through their current situation, the job was eliminated there, and the series were eliminated. And, you know, in the end, I'm proud that this is, we did a great job, and that the community and the commissioners wanted this to continue to happen. And, you know, we are responsible for the dollars that happen. It does take support. You can't do a show, tickets for talent. You need sponsors. You need government support. You need local business support. It takes so many things to have the success of what we had, and this is just a continuation of that. And, you know, total transparency with the budget, total transparency with what we're doing. We need help, and if this is to continue, then this support is needed, and I appreciate this opportunity and honor that you consider me heading this again. Thank you.
Let's speak to that total transparency of the budget.
Sure.
When we spoke, you know, I said I want to see a business plan because, you know, a lot of our tourism dollars, they go without us seeing a budget, without us knowing if there's even a dollar-for-dollar investment on the other side.
Right.
And, you know, while we're supporting this for two hundred and fifty thousand, last year we supported it for three hundred and fifty thousand, but what we're also seeing here is a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment from you and other investors. So there's this is a six hundred thousand dollar budget of which we're not even covering half. And in the previous years, you said, six years you've been doing these shows.
Right.
You've always received pretty significant
It was usually three, correct.
Usually three hundred to
It was usually three, three fifty, correct.
Yeah, yeah. How long have you been doing concert promotion, in the business of concert promotion?
In the business, I've always done events, you know, my whole career, whether it was at iHeart Media, you know, whether I did non-traditional events, or I did car shows, or monster truck shows, or events. You know, we always did a bunch of things, and then that led me to Harrisburg University where my skill set kind of blended into that. And it was a perfect fit for me. I ran to work every day, and I loved the job, and I loved the business and the industry and the people that are all involved in it. But yeah, that's kind of where it started, and, you know, we did a great job. Harrisburg University Presents did a fantastic job, whether it be at XL, at the Forum, Hershey Theater. We brought a lot of shows to a lot of different places and moved. You know, I think the amount of people, it's over, I think a million and a half people that we sold tickets to over. You know, when you look at our database, where I would go into Ticketmaster and see the actual database of who bought tickets or the people we affected, and even the radius. People would come from all over. We'd see at least probably a sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety mile radius of people that were purchasing tickets that were coming into town, and I think that's why you see that the Bureau, you know, put it at one point, something for economic impact, putting heads in beds for hotels and restaurants in the market. There wasn't a time when we did a Riverfront Park show that Front Street would be totally full, and you could tell the town was jumping because of the shows that we were going to have that night. Like you had to be in and be settled because people were coming. And, you know, Harrisburg Police Department did a fantastic job, county support did a fantastic job, and the team that I assembled down there. Everybody knew their role, and everybody did great.
Great. I just want to list some artists that have come through. I mean, these are national artists. They're not, you know, they're very large acts that have come to the region. So Head and the Heart, Black Pumas, Fleet Foxes. I was at both those, the Fleet Foxes and Black Pumas last year. Young the Giant, Lord Huron, Jason Isbell, I mean, four-time Grammy Award winner.
He was a repeat artist that would ask to continue to come back.
Would ask to come back. That's awesome.
The National.
That's, they've received a Grammy. Portugal Man Grammy, Death Cab for Cutie, kind of weird that they don't have a Grammy, but very nationally known.
Another artist that would want to come back.
Yeah, Cage the Elephant, two Grammys, The Roots, four Grammys. I mean, these are artists that, you know, most people who are, you know, familiar with music are aware of. They're not just random concerts. These are acts that are curated, that attract nationally-known talent and influence to the region, like they're credentialed artists. And I think the effort to save these shows actually puts the county in a better position with tourism and with ensuring that, you know, we're looking out for the industry of tourism, the hotels that are impacted by this. Last last year when I was at the Fleet Foxes show, I met four people from Maryland who had come to the show. You know, I appreciate the business plan. I'll also express, I just want to express this clearly, you know, I was concerned about you being on the IDA and this being something that you were considering, and you resigned from the IDA. And I appreciate the removal of appearances of conflict, even as we enter into these as we enter into these agreements, because I think these are the challenges that have existed in the past and something that I think is going to have such an impact and that could grow into something. You know, look, South by Southwest is, you know, one of the most massive concerts. I'm not saying
And I was very proud of
But I do think as we build out, there's a lot of opportunity to cooperate with, you know, some of our amazing venues here in Harrisburg.
I was very proud of my work with the IDA and the EDC, and I did not want there to be any appearance of conflict whatsoever. And, you know, moving forward, that was the right decision for me to make.
Again, Frank, we've got a storied history here. Have I voted against Harrisburg Concert Series for Harrisburg University?
Yes.
I believe, and I have been consistently, whether it's this project or any other ones, that the most effective use, if we could, for marketing dollars and tourism dollars are for marketing this region, figuring out a way to draw regional interest in Dolphin County to be able to support Harrisburg, Hershey, and the metropolitan area in a effort to continue a sustainable way to drive those dollars into the county. And I know there's been a lot to be talked about with VHH or the visit Hershey-Harrisburg, and I know there's concerns from the board, but ultimately, those marketing those marketing dollars and the campaigns that are run have shown record years of investment in tourism, which is the second-leading industry in Dolphin County. You know, there's this idea, if you make an investment, a one-night stay in a downtown location for a concert is good, but you want sustainable revenues from marketing dollars and to be able to use those as wise as possible. So I just want to make it clear. My non-support of this today is a consistent way that I don't think our dollars are being used in the highest and best interest. And I think for us to be able to talk about concerts versus a sustainable plan for tourism, which is a critical part of Dolphin County's future industry, and to have a plan that is sustainable and investing in a way that's going to maintain that industry is, in my opinion, the biggest priority, not in not a new concert idea. And quite frankly, I'd love to engage in a much more meaningful, larger dialogue around how we plan to address the tourism and the challenges that exist in VHH and the potential new owner. That, to me, is where our time and energy and effort should be spent, not on an individual concert discussion that comes out of clear blue. So.
I want to take a moment and thank Mr. Connor and Mr. Schofield for the work that they've done in preparation for today. This event has morphed from the HU events where thousands of people come down, attend the events. I've been a supporter of this on an annual basis, and Commissioner, I do believe that you have voted against, but you have also on occasions voted for it. And even voting against it, members of this board have requested tickets and attended the concerts. So you can vote any way you want, but we're all aware that this is something that's beneficial to the region, to the city, to the county. It's a hundred thousand dollar savings from the prior year. I have full support for Frank and this project, and I'm not going to say I'm going to vote for it next year. And I have that right, but I'd like to see what you can do this year.
Right.
And you're rolling out those numbers. I mean, those are legitimate numbers, Mr. Connor, correct, of the hotel stays, the restaurants, the amount of money that's being expended here, which far exceeds the money that we're putting out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post?
No.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no former business. Is there any new business? No new business. We'll move on to commissioners' discussion in action. Commissioner Hartwick?
Sure. First thing I'd like to do is point out a partnership and thank Ben Knox from our Department of Aging. We've really undertaken a huge effort to overhaul and to talk about the financial stability and the ability for us to move forward in a footing for the opportunity to serve our residents in the Area Agency on Aging. They are some of our most vulnerable residents in this community, and we have a responsibility at the time of need to be in, ensure that the level of services we provide are going to be able to meet those needs. Unfortunately, you know, the resources are dwindling, and the growth of that population is important, so it's really important for us to be able to create partnerships with other organizations. We have a volunteer base for our Area Agency on Aging that is phenomenal. If we just pay minimum wage for those people who do Meals on Wheels, you know, they support our seniors, I think it's in excess of three million dollars annually. They would cost taxpayers that would come out of our budget that would reduce the level of service. So I want to first thank the volunteers who do an incredible job. But I'd also like to announce an important partnership today to even better serve those inbound individuals in difficult-to-serv areas in a partnership with our own Dolphin County Library System. The Dolphin County Library System, we're partnering to focus expanding library materials to underserved areas and people who may be experiencing social isolation. social, social isolation. The goal is to connect individuals who are being served through our home-delivered meals with books the library is discontinuing from circulation. So these books, the libraries do not need back. The actual home-delivered meal clients may choose to participate on a voluntary basis to receive three books, or three books, a CD, on a CD per quarter. With the help of the agency's volunteer network, they will distribute the books along with their meals quarterly. Again, volunteer efforts, being able to recycle and reuse books, the kind of efforts that we know are sustainable, that we can continue to provide. This collaboration presents a unique opportunity to bring valuable reading and library materials to individuals in the community who might otherwise have limited access to such resources. By expanding the availability of books and audiobooks, we aim to enrich the lives and support lifelong learning for all members of our community, particularly those in our underserved areas. So I want to thank all of those individuals who are involved in both the creation and the distribution, and those volunteers who make this a cost-effective way to improve lives. Second thing I want to note, yesterday I had a big meeting with the Bhutanese community, and we had a extraordinarily exciting and passionate dialogue. It was probably one of the more productive meetings I've been involved with in a long time, and we were talking about the issues of their engagement with suicide prevention. I was a friend with a guy named Padam Rizal ten years ago who came to this country, who was a refugee counselor, who quite frankly, you know, had his own traumatic issues at the end, but in his spirit and in his passion, we had this discussion about stigma and, you know, the ability to be judged in the Bhutanese community. And, you know, we talk about the need for cultural understanding and sensitivity. I think we really need to listen and understand that in order to really gain an effective strategy, we really need to gain the ability to have those kind of open conversations and dialogues and finding out and identifying the best way to serve the communities in which we're responsible, and it comes from people from those communities. So yesterday, we sort of outlined a really strong structure of a call-away, open groups, the ability to talk about stigma, and just started to set up a series of additional meetings that I think are going to result in one heck of a plan and ultimately save lives. And the passion that was involved in the room yesterday is something that really even relit my fire, and I'm grateful to all those who were open enough and had the courage to talk about their own issues, but also who are willing to get involved to be a partner, to be able to, to address these kind of concerns. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Grease. Yes, I want to take a moment and give a shout out to two of my oversights that are here today. Parks and Rec Director Anthea Stebbins is here, and also Solid Waste and Recycling Director Kelly McGowan. I want to say thank you to both you for the great work that you have done and are doing, and your staffs are remarkable. I get all kinds of positive comments from residents when they go to our events at Fort Hunter and Wildwood and other locations, and individuals come in and utilize the recycling center on a weekly and daily basis, or are so pleased with the service that they get there. And I want to say thank you to both you for the great work that you and your team are doing. Another great American outdoor show has come and gone. I'm going to continue to, to tout that. All, everyone who was able to attend, all three commissioners were able to get over there at some point, but again, it's an eighty million dollar annual revenue generator, eight thousand jobs during the ten days, and two point six million dollars in taxes that come to the region. Hotels and the restaurants are just bustling during that time all over Dolphin County and across county lines. So it's something that has a huge economic impact, and I will continue to support that event moving forward. Also, I couldn't help but notice that my colleague, George Hartwick, has his Eagles jersey on today. And what a day that was. E-A-G-L-E-S Eagles, another Super Bowl. I want to give a special shout out to Pennsylvania-raised Saquon Barkley, number twenty-six in your program, number one in your hearts, as a, as a Penn State alum. Couldn't be happier for him. I know we're all beaming with joy and pride, and I was reminded recently, he's just not only a graduate of Whitehall in Allentown, Penn State University. I want to give a special thank you to the New York Giants for allowing Saquon to come over and play with the Eagles this year, but he was also Mr. PA Football ten years ago. So that's something that we should all be proud of too, but a great day for the Eagles and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Bless you. Thank you, Commissioner Grease. I was a Birds fan on Sunday as well. I'm, I'm a Packers fan, and the Birds beat the Packers, so the way it looks now is our team ended in second place is the way I look at it, you know what I mean? So my comments today are, I'd like to just make some comments about Black History Month. During Black History Month, we honor the profound contributions of Black Americans to our nation's history, culture, and progress. It's a time to reflect on the struggles for justice and equality, celebrate the achievements that have shaped our communities, and recommit ourselves to fostering inclusion and understanding in all that we do. If you look to the screens, you'll see a photo of T. Morris Chester. T. Morris Chester lived from eighteen thirty-four to eighteen ninety-two, was a pioneering journalist, lawyer, and civil rights advocate, born and raised in Harrisburg. During the Civil War, he began the only Black War correspondent for a major newspaper, reporting from the front lines for the Philadelphia Press. Chester used his platform to advocate for African-American troops, pushing for their right to fight and be treated as equals. After the war, he continued his work as a lawyer and diplomat, promoting civil rights and justice both in the U.S. and abroad. His legacy as a fearless reporter and champion for equality remains an important part of Harrisburg's rich Black history and is to be celebrated. The T. Morris Chester statue is located near the intersection of Walnut Street and North Fourth Street by the K. Leroy Ervis Building on the Capitol Complex grounds. I'm encouraging everyone to find time this month to visit the statue, read the plaques, and celebrate the history of our great county. Moving on to Correspondence. Mr. Hagerty has received the Correspondence and will ensure they are disseminated as appropriate. We are now moving on to our time for public participation. Again, remember, there's a three-minute limit, and we are being livestreamed. We'll begin with, yeah. Morning. Morning.
Yes, my name is Robert Gross. I'm representing my father, Larry Thomas Agurro. He's been incarcerated from twenty twenty to right now, and he was a former in the, in the Navy as a captain, and he was going to have his knee replaced and also his mesh replaced when he got shot. He also is given the Medal of Honor. He hasn't had, I tried to get furloughs to get it done, and they said they were going to do it, and it's never been done. But the other issue is, is that when the situation occurred, when he was incarcerated, what happened was we went to a, a school, a middle school, to pick up the, the boy, the little boy and the little girl. Oh, okay. Sorry.
Commissioners, you might wonder why I'm up here. Whenever I heard this gentleman express some concerns earlier, I'm familiar with the individual, Mr. Zergo, and I told him that I would come up and kind of help him if he needed it.
Yes, I do.
To sort of set the stage.
I appreciate it.
Would you like me to do that?
Certainly.
And what I'm telling him now is I wouldn't discuss the charges.
Sure.
So what happened was Mr. Zergo was incarcerated, and before I get there, Commissioner Douglas, this is what I'm working on for you, my color-coded.
Thank you.
List of inmates and their confinement dates. So I work with the prison quarterly, about to check in to see who's been in there the longest, and so that our office can make sure that we are chipping away at those cases. And so I was able to run downstairs and see when Mr. Zergo was incarcerated, and it was in, looks like twenty twenty, on some serious charges that are challenging, and the stakes are really high. This is an eighty-one-year-old gentleman. Initially, our office represented Mr. Zergo, and then he decided to get private counsel. He had the misfortune of being incarcerated right before COVID, when the courts started to shut down and we had a limited number of trials. Ultimately, he was approaching the eve of trial, and he decided that he wanted to go with a private attorney, who I know he's now unhappy with, and I think that's a large part of the concern. And I, I just wanted to help him set the stage to let him know that we're here, here to help. I know that there were some issues. But I think he's concerned because of health concerns that he has had, his age.
Sure.
And things of that nature.
Yes, it's very severe.
So Mary, what can we do? I mean, what, what are you suggesting the commissioners?
Right. I don't think that this is a problem that the commissioners can actually help with, quite frankly. To be honest, I've worked with all of you on, you know, discussing the length of stay for inmates, and I'm working, Commissioner Douglas, I hope to have this cleaned up and to you today. And so what we are doing, what the commissioners have been doing, is making sure that we're fully staffed so that we can at least move our cases. You were very accommodating whenever I needed to hire more seasoned attorneys to handle the type of charges that Mr. Zergo is facing. And though we don't represent him, currently, we would be happy to take him back. And now that we're fully staffed, or practically fully staffed, and we have a number of attorneys who are experienced enough to handle these sort of charges, that's one option for you. Another option is perhaps for me to discuss with him other private attorneys who might be really skilled in this area of criminal law and be able to help him, and just a promise to you that we are working to remedy this, this situation, even though I understand your frustration, and I appreciate Lawrence's as well. So I can tell you that they're doing all they can. They stay after me to, to make sure that we are moving cases. Unfortunately, you know, we'll do the best we can if you decide to come back with us, but if you don't, I'm happy to help you in any way I can.
I do appreciate that. I just wanted to say one thing. Since he's been in there, there's been some situations where they gave him the wrong medication, okay? He passed out, and then they found him passed out, and then they took him into a cruiser, and they gave him the same medication again, and then they sent him to the hospital, and his kidneys are messed up now. So he's slowly getting beat up while he's in there, and that's, you know, people make mistakes, they're human beings, and that's what happened to him, but he can't keep on having situations like that happen, because if there's one that's not, you know, that's not going to turn around, and he'll be okay, that's it. So it's very touch and go because of his age and the medications that he should be on, and the duration of not getting operation on your knee, it's purple, it's very painful. He used to be able to walk with a cane, now he has a walker. He suffers constantly with pain. He's just a tough guy, and he's just riding it out. But the lawyer that was hired, he actually investigated me and him, not the situation of the, why he was incarcerated. So that doesn't make too much sense to me. I mean, I know a lot of lawyers, but this one doesn't seem, he has Larry waiting for month after month till somebody comes and checks him out to see if he's, you know, senile, he has his marbles right. But in essence, the lawyer has the same problem. So I mean, doesn't make things too good.
Sir, that's three minutes.
Can I ask, can I ask that afterwards, we, you and I just have a quick conversation off the side, because I can, I can do some work to try to ensure that we're advocating for, looking into his, his medical treatment and such with, I can work with admin at the prison. So, so let's chat afterwards and discuss that, and thank you for your comments.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mary, for your, for your help.
No problem.
Thank you. Others for public participation.
I initially had some prepared remarks about transparency.
Could you please state your name again for the record? Thank you.
Yes. My name, for the record, is Pamela Parson, City of Harrisburg. I initially had some prepared remarks about transparency after looking at this long agenda yesterday, but something happened this morning on my way here that I thought was more important to bring your attention to, and especially in light of what Commissioner Hartwick shared about his work with the Bhutanese community. And one of that, and so what happened this morning, I found out before I left the house at eight-thirty, that ICE was at Nineteenth and Dairy this morning. They had, they were on Thirteenth Street yesterday. This is not innuendo. I, I have, I have confirmed this. And so I also heard from a teacher that her students texted her today, and they said, "We aren't going to school today because we are too afraid to go to school." So the fear in this community of people whose citizenship is not secure, whether they are from south of the border or anywhere else, this is trauma for them. Even folks in the Bhutanese community, what is happening now is bringing up trauma for them. And so when I look at what I happened this morning, and in light of what we talked about today, I must admit that I have to agree with Commissioner Hartwick, that spending this money right now on a concert series, to me, seems bullish. I was very concerned to hear about Na- Naaman Center, even though I might not particularly always approve of their approach, leaving northern Dolphin County, because there are few addiction resources available there. And sometimes when you all sit here and you talk about Harrisburg and Hershey, you forget that our county is a big county that extends beyond the mountain. When you talk about what benefits a concert event or a South by Southwest mini-series, and I'm familiar with South by Southwest, brings into the Harrisburg and the hotel stays, I might remind you that the Hilton Hotel was built where the Warner Hotel is, and much of the downtown development that exists here now is because we tore down single-room occupancy hotels. They were seedy, but they provided homes for people, and we never replaced those. So yes, this brings money in, but it doesn't benefit a huge swath of people. It only benefits a few. Yes, I heard that. And I just would also like to point out that while I'm really happy about the partnership between the Dolphin County Library and the Area Agency on Aging and the books, and while I'm very happy about that, I will also remind you all that our employees at the Dolphin County Library System do not make a living wage. Thank you.
On Ruth O'Sai, Swatara Township, for the record. Hi, guys. Thank you, Pam, for, for sharing that, because I, I, I know also the fear that's in, even people who are citizens who just have a little accent on them, I'm telling you, as someone who's related to a lot of those, there's a lot of fear, right, in people right now, and I think that has to be noted. I, I want to also agree with Commissioner Hartwick on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's spent for this live concert series. And not that I don't think concerts are important, and not that I don't understand that economic development is important, but I do think these concerts happen where? On a riverfront? Is that riverfront? So we look at the footprint of Harrisburg City that we're using to host these comments, these concerts, and then we're looking at the attendance of who goes, and listening to that list of people, they are well-known, Commissioner Douglas, to a certain group of people. They are not well-known in every community, and I really, really encourage you to expand what that means. And I understand the Roots are Black, and I understand.
Well, I actually want to address that that was actually part of my conversations with Frank, was more diversity in the music.
Well, I didn't hear that up here today.
We didn't, we didn't talk about that today.
Yeah, so, but you listed a name, and you said that they were well-known by everyone, and I just want you to know that they're not. So those are indie rock acts that are known by a specific subset of people, and I would argue that that specific subset of people is not the majority of the people who live in the surrounding area who are most impacted by what happens when you bring twelve thousand people into a city, right? There are plenty of other places that these concert series in Dolphin County, I'm sure, could be held, but there's a reason we're picking the riverfront, I'm sure, but I think there's an impact that has not been considered that should be, especially considering the not been considered, that should be, especially considering the impact it will have on the city itself. Right? It might, for some businesses downtown, it might be good, but for businesses all over the city, I don't think that they would agree that it's going to be a big boon for them. Um, so I would just really implore you to look into that. And, and I have questions about the people running it, if they're capable of, of finding acts that, um, uh, are more diverse. So I'm just going to be honest. Um, and so I think that a quarter of a million dollars could have been better spent doing things like, there's a huge homeless population in Riverfront, off Cameron Street, off of, uh, right over by Pendote. Those people have, have no homes, right? There's no, we know that there's no housing for people. There's a s- serious lack of housing, affordable housing for people. $250,000 would go a long way towards that. Whatever, I, I, I just don't think that it is helpful to the county to spend a quarter of a million dollars on a concert series when we're in a condition where you guys had to have an executive session about whether you're going to get federal funds or state funds for things. Like that's where we're at. That's where we're at. It's the reality we're living in. And $250,000 to a new idea by a guy who just got fired by his old job and had to resign from a board just to submit this. And I'd also like to mention, these types of proposals should be made. We had a, a propos, like, um, a presentation last week for, uh, mountain biking, which I thought was really cool. Um, I would love to see these types of things come in like a PowerPoint form, because if you can't even bring a PowerPoint to explain to the public and show us, you said you spent a lot of time putting information together. I'd love to see it on paper and I'd love to see it up on these screens. Cause without that, they're just words from your mouth and some of your mouths I don't trust tell the truth. Cause I've heard them lie before. So I would just like to be a hundred percent honest. I really don't think you should have voted for it. I think you, I think in the future, you should ask a lot more questions and ask to see a lot more put up here before the public before you make such grandiose things. And I don't think it should be, we're presenting it today and voting on it today. There's a workshop meeting. And those things, I don't understand why you can't come in a workshop meeting and show those things and vote on them a week later. So people have time to digest and get their comments in. So I'd love to see more of that going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Appearing there is no more public comment. Uh, Commissioner Priest, I confirm the contract, item 52, District Attorney contract, one year. Sorry for the delay.
Thank you, Sol, sir. Thank you. Seeing no one else for public comment, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.